Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Select meeting for Monday, December 9th. All rise, please, as we stand from Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We'll start with public audience tonight. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board? No? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see any hands up. Please.
Thank you. Twenty-sixth Whitton Drive. Now that the election is over and people have elected a Republican majority on the Board of Selectment, it is time to put aside political hankering and set public policy in the best interest of the town. At the installation organizational meeting of the Board of Selectment on December 2nd, First-Electing Mary Glassman was unprofessional in her assessment of the Republican majority on the board. The best interest of the voters in a democracy is majority rule. The board sets policy and the first-electman implements the actions. Section 402 of the Charter states, and I quote, "At the organization meeting, the selectmen shall elect from among their own members a deputy first-electman," end quote. The majority voted for Nancy Hasi in accordance with the Charter. First-electman's Mary Glassman's assessment of the voters of Simsbury is dead wrong. Simsbury has representative government and the board was elected to do the people's work. The strong message that was sent on Election Day by the voters was that they wanted this electment to consist of two Democrats and four Republicans. The sad night for Simsbury voters is that First-Electing Mary Glassman doesn't get it. The voters will be served well if First-Electing Mary Glassman does not challenge the intent of the elected official and get on with the work at hand. I was surprised when First-Electing Mary Glassman, after losing Lisa Heedner as a deputy selectman to Nancy Hasi, that Glassman was trying to conduct a backroom deal of force trading, the deputy selectman's vote, with a promise to elect a Democrat as chairman of the Finance Board. If First-Electing Mary Glassman was truly interested in the best interest of town, she would encourage the election of Peter Askam as the chairman of the Board of Finance, since he is most knowledgeable and has served the longest time. The decision of the chairman should come from a majority vote of the elected members of the Board of Finance, not First-Electing Mary Glassman. It appears from the rules of procedure submitted by Sean Askam at the December meeting that the Republican majority is interested in more open government by allowing the public more participation in the process. If First-Electing Mary Glassman was interested in the best interest of the town, she would fulfill her promise to the voters and change the Charter to reflect professional management of the town with a town manager. At the December meeting of the Board of Selectment, it was a question as to what determined a caucus as opposed to a quorum. According to the Freedom of Information Act, a caucus consists of all members of a single party meeting alone. A quorum consists of each member's to vote on action items. Recently, there was a security breach at the Northeast Utility Substation near the Urgent Care Facility at the north end of town, where there is an anticipation of a large development of homes abutting in the facility. It is alleged the trailer was broken into and cap wire was stolen. I copied this article from the Internet with a heading of "What are the dangers of living near high voltage power lines?" Quote, "Although there has been much controversy over the years about the health risk of living near power lines, the evidence is becoming overwhelming that there are indeed risks of illness, such as leukemia, particularly in children, cancer, brain tumors, high blood pressure, stress-induced headaches, fatigue, and immune deficiencies." The list grows as ten years go on and the findings of studies accumulate. Apart from the obvious dangers of electrocution, there are other serious health hazards that are now recognized as occurring as a result of living near high voltage overhead power lines. The Thinkabout-it website says a study carried by the Swedish government, five hundred thousand people over twenty-five years, found that children living near high voltage power lines had four times the risk of getting cancer than in normal circumstances, with adults were three times more likely. The Swedish government now rates electromagnetic fields, along with tobacco, as a Class II carcinogen. End quote. Was the town aware of the health problems living near a power station? How can the town allow the development of the adjacent property for residential use? After an incident at the Simsbury Celebrate Saturday night, November 30th, it is alleged the Simsbury police were alerted that a male high school student was tweeting to a female high school student words that were sexual in nature and threatening her, saying he would do bodily harm to her. The use of electronic media by high school students to threaten, bully, or do bodily harm is a serious issue. When the superintendent of schools, Matt Curtis, read the tweets, he stated that he is taking these tweets very seriously, and I will take his word for it. With the new town incidents fresh in everyone's mind, threats could have serious consequences, and parents should monitor their children's social media. The town has lost the retirement and resignation of many heads of department. The finance director gave notice in a timely manner, and there has been no professional finance director taking her place. I am concerned that the town did not post the opening on the state government finance offices of Connecticut, CFOA website. Why has the town elected to go to a politically connected headhunter as opposed to a professional website? This lack of continuity and professionalism leaves the town at risk. Recently, there was an unannounced inspection of town facilities by OSHA. OSHA issued seventeen citations, five of which are classified as serious. The proposed penalty for the violations were $3,220. The negotiated settlement was $1,006.10. When departments have skeletal staff, there is lack of oversight and increased risk. It is a sad day in Simsbury when First-Electing Mary Glassman cannot fill key positions in a timely manner. This is due to lack of professional management. The signs on the tennis, on the paddle court tell players to pay to play at the front desk when it is closed. As you notice, the sign is on the door to the court, does not have the cost for play, and the part of the time is omitted. Many of the times noted on the sign, the office is closed. How do they expect to collect the phantom money? Is this professional management? Why pay just to walk on the courts? Someone from this board has changed the policy since the golf lobby on the Recreation Commission is only interested in golf and dismisses everything else. There are still beer bottles in the garbage barrel at the paddle courts. Are they recycling the bottles and returning the money to the special revenue fund? I would like to report that as a member of the Simsbury Farms A paddle team, I won my match against Shuttle Meadow Country Club, and I am still undefeated. Three wins, no losses. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
I see that there's an area on the agenda that's discussed and possibly take action to form an economic development task force. I would certainly hope that one of the discussions that we would be having is about the PAD and the fact that, in a guy's life, it's the perfect girlfriend, it's anything you want it to be at the time. I just saw a proposal for Powder Forest, which is being proposed for more apartments, yet more apartments in town, and a few condos, and also a hotel, which is going to be in walking distance to the Simsbury Inn. So I think we really ought to probably look at it, see if we can put a little more detail in it, because it looked like that was also wall-to-wall, and not sure if it's going to affect the Route 10 corridor study, and we need to, you know, see if we can get Hiram to actually do his job. And as Joan pointed out with the OSHA problem, that is a Hiram issue, because Hiram is in charge of that, and yet again, something he's done has been screwed up. Speaking of a problem with drainage, or any problems with that, I still have my drainage issue across the street from my house that was created by the planning commission, and it could have been dealt with then, but it wasn't, and so now I am looking to make sure it gets dealt with, because everything's starting to ice up on the road. And I'm worried about the kids on the bus, and I'm worried about all the water that I seem to be getting on my property, and other people are as well. So if that could be dealt with, I would really appreciate it. And I would really hope that this economic development task force will look at things from a realist perspective, of bringing in the right types of development, but also on the flip side, making sure they get developed correctly, and we don't just drop it in like the commercial used to be, that they would just drop a grocery store into town or something. I think we really need to be, you know, looking at how we're doing things, and I think we've started with some of the discussions, the marketing studies and whatever, but I'm really concerned about the fact that it depends who goes on this commission, and there are people that ran for office that said that they were going to be looking at the right type of development, but a bunch of those people were hugging a big box a few years ago. So I think we need to really have an open discussion about what we all want. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to address the Board of Selectmen. Robert Kalischman, sorry. I just more or less like to notify the people that are here today. I see a lot of new faces that weren't present to honor the survivors of Corregidor or Batan, but we now have named a new bridge on Simsbury Road. It's called the Batan Corregidor Bridge, and it's named in honor of the survivors and dead that fought for us in 1942, where we were preparing for the enemy. They stood and died, and were taken prisoner. And I think it was time, and it's long in coming. It should have been here twenty years ago, but it seems that we have other priorities, the good old boys mainly. In passing, I attended the meeting that nominated and elected the new deputy select woman, or man, women, and I sat through it, and sour grapes. And then I see that, I hear, a lot of rules, a lot of rumors for rules of procedure. Find a little odd. When we had a vote in this chamber, Madam First-Electman, you were absent. The deputy selectwoman was here, and the present representative, John Hampton, was here, and they had an opportunity at that time, if they wanted to put in the charter, that who, that who would nominate the deputy could well have been done. But there were other things afoot. Here again, people that sat on that charter revision board, in my opinion, had their own agenda. And their agenda was to get rid of the constables, for whatever reason it was. I feel it was strictly political. When I look at the makeup of the state marshals, I think that move was strictly political. And then the next thing, they had the choice, the players had the choice to make, put in the charter about the deputy selectman, that it would be appointment of either the consul or the Board of Selectmen or the first-electman. And that could have been well done, but it was ignored. Now, getting back to the rumor of rules of procedure, why has this all of a sudden come up? After ten, fifteen years, rules of procedure are starting to be bandied about. And the thing that I like to address, that I think this board should address, in my opinion, are two things. The Board of Ethics, which all of a sudden, the Republicans have a majority, and all of a sudden, we gotta go, or they have to send it to the Board of Ethics, which, in my opinion, is a do-nothing board. I wrote several ladders to them, and to date, they haven't acted unwin. And I could, more than likely, there's people that sitting in this audience that can, that they addressed the Board of Ethics, and it never been done. Now I understand we have a new player. I read the minutes. New player is Mr. Hensley. He's either the chairman or co-chairman, and he's come with a raft of motions, and I don't have time to go through them, but there's quite a few motions that he's presented. And I think it's wrong. And the reason I think it wrong, if he's going to wear two hats, he's going to wear one on the Ethics Board, and he's going to wear one on the PAC Performing Arts Center, if anything, that's a violation of the code, in my opinion. And when we get down to the serious matter, in my opinion, is the OSHA, which was at the last meeting, or the meeting previous, which was very, was just glared over. It was, everything's gray at OSHA. We were fined five times. Serious fines. And we have a situation down at the PAC. Everybody is so enthused about bringing in people and paying people. You have, I don't know how many violations of the code down there. You have an operation being run with extension wires. Mary, I remember the circus fire. Why aren't our inspectors and where is the fire marshal? Down there, you're running operations with extension cords, and this is a million-dollar operation down there. And it was never addressed, just as public facilities were never addressed down there, which should have been installed when you built the building. And it well could have been, if you counted the Peter Golds and Mr. Orlocks commissions that pulled out it. And to this day, I've never seen an accounting of that money that was handled down there by Peter Gold or Rick Orlock. I never seen, and it was state money that was acquired by Mr. Hurley and Mr. Hagney, I think. And going back...
If you could summarize, Mr. Kalischman.
Yeah, I'm going to close right now.
Thank you.
Well, getting back, we're talking about five serious violations at the PAC. And we have the chairman of both, the chairman of the fundraising arm of the PAC, and we have the previous chairman of the PAC. And we have five serious code violations. And I think the reason the fire marshal never did anything down there, and the building department in Simsbury never did anything down there, was strictly political. They were told not to do anything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Mary Turner, Simsbury. And with me...
Laurie Fernand, 15 Camille Lane, Simsbury.
With me here is Laurie Fernand. She is a member of the Recycling Committee. I'm chair of the Recycling Committee. In view of the pending agreement between Pains, Inc., and All Waste and the Town, the Recycling Committee is requesting the anticipated recycling rebate to the town be set aside in a special account for which the Recycling Committee may draw, with Board of Selectmen's approval, funds to promote and support further recycling efforts townwide. The following are some proposals for the use of these funds. Educational notices to all households and businesses. That's approximately ten thousand two hundred pieces of mail. A street banner. Outreach to schools. Large stickers with updated recycling information for home recycling bins. Annual update in bills. Compost bins. A recycling fair, both in the spring and in the fall. Special media, social media presence. Additional collection bins throughout the town for bottles, cans, and other recyclables. And a cost of the annual hazardous waste collection, which in the last event that they had was about $18,000. I would appreciate your consideration and approval for this request when it does come up for the, in your budget process. Laurie has worked closely with Tom Roy on this project, and in regards to the rebate, and we were very fortunate to receive funds a couple of years back, where, as a result, Rich Switzke had earmarked some of that money for our efforts, which we now have a swap shop that's located at the transfer station, which is open only on Saturdays. At this time, it's closed. It's open between April and October, every Saturday. But we think that this is a win-win. If we can get this, we can only increase recycling, which is all of our mission.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary and Laurie, for your hard work. Would you be able to submit something in writing? I haven't received anything formal.
Sure.
Absolutely. And I think a budget outlining what the total amount of the request and the purpose would be helpful for the board to consider.
We've got a couple round figures as far as costs are concerned, outside of the hazardous household waste collection, which last time committed about $18,000, but it also depends on, you know, how quickly the funds are coming into the town, so, but we can definitely put something in writing.
Okay. If we could get something in writing, and then I can have staff review it and put a recommendation before the board.
That's great.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board? Okay. Thank you all very much for your comments. We'll move right along. First report is First-Electmen's Report. I'm pleased to announce this is holiday season, and want to wish everyone a happy holidays, from our family to all of your family. And I wanted to remind folks that Simsbury Social Service Department, again, is providing a mechanism for folks to help out their neighbors. There are jars, help-your-neighbor jars, available throughout the community, at banks, stores, churches, classrooms. You simply put your loose change in the jars, return them back to Social Service Department, and then they'll partner with Food Share to make sure that they distribute the wonderful, thoughtful jars to folks who need it. If folks have any questions, they can call the Social Service Department at (658)3283. Also, I want to thank the Abigail Phelps Chapter of the DAR, which will hold wreaths across America, again, this year. The ceremony will take place on Saturday, December 14th, at noon. The wreath-laying ceremony begins at noon, and it's located at the flagpole at Simsbury Cemetery on Plank Hill Road. This is a national program that honors veterans by placing wreaths on their graves. There will be a reception, sounds very good, hot chili and hot chocolate, at the Simsbury Public Library following the ceremony. If you have any questions, you can contact the DAR at (860) 490-0105. And I want to thank the DAR, the library, and all the volunteers who are putting on this wonderful celebration. Also, I want to give special thanks to Senator Wickos, who worked with Representative Hampton and our own Dan Crowley to rename the Route 185 Bridge to the Batan Corregidor Memorial Bridge. It was a wonderful ceremony on Saturday, had a great turnout, and I want to thank everyone for participating and certainly honoring our surviving veterans. We had two veterans there, Mr. Stark and Mr. Crowley, the only two survivors of the Batan Corregidor March in Connecticut, still living in Connecticut. So it was a wonderfully moving celebration. Thanks to all. We'll move now to our action items. Our first item is approval of the tax refunds. Our tax collector has indicated we have a total of $5,067.79 in tax refunds. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move that.
Second, any questions, corrections, changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is approval of the facility operation agreement with the Simsbury Performing Arts Center. I want to thank Tom Cook and Dave Ryan, who chairs the board, and also Mr. Hensley, who, for records, not on the Board of Ethics, so thought I would clear your name on that one, but for all your hard work in bringing this forward to the board. I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for their support previously on the web management report, which really gave a blueprint to our own Performing Arts Board and the nonprofit board on how to move forward. We are at the day they recommended, and the report recommended that the town turn over the operations, the day-to-day operations, to a nonprofit, and I want to congratulate all for doing that. There's some folks who will be serving on that board, so I want to thank those as well. The proposal before the board is a three-year contract. It will begin on January 1st. It gives a non-exclusive operations agreement to the Performing Arts Board nonprofit to manage and conduct operations from March to November. It also makes the PAC board responsible for the hiring of its own employees and contractors. It will allow the town to assign the agreement with the Hartford Symphony. The town will also be able to use the facility, since it is a town facility. And the town will provide the remaining funds into the special revenue funds as seed funds, and the town in return will receive a flat fee to cover administrative expenses, of which there will not be many unless it's requested and paid for by the nonprofit. And those funds would range from $2,500 to $10,000, based on a 5% of revenues formula. There is, the contract is attached, it has been reviewed by Town Council, it has been endorsed by all the volunteers of both the Performing Arts Board and also the nonprofit, and it's here before you for discussion. Any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
And I raised this with Mr. Cook this morning, so he's already aware of it. The opening and closing of the playground during events, I know sometimes it is closed for safety reasons.
Yes.
Who is responsible for that, under this contract? Will the...
Who's responsible for closing that?
Who makes the decision to close the playground during an event?
The Police Department makes it. The Performing Arts Board requests it, and then the Police Department makes the decision as to whether it's safe.
So the new board will contact the Police Department, and then they'll make a decision?
It is town property, so they would need town approval.
Right. I just wanted to make sure, because I know it's right in the middle of the...
Absolutely. It's a safety decision, so we'll need to determine what's safer with, with folks going in and using the parking and children playing.
Right.
It's not a good combination.
That's what I was concerned about.
Yes.
I assume all gatherings will still be subject to the public gathering permit process?
Yes, because they have to, it is still a town facility.
Right.
The one big change here is the board had indicated that we wanted to go out to bid this year for the management of the operations. We still think that's important, and if the town were to continue to operate it, we would recommend that, but that's no longer a town decision, so it will be up to the nonprofit as to how they want to retain and hire folks. So that's not a decision of towns anymore. Lisa.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Hensley for your work as chairman of the Board of the Performing Arts Center and your entire board, who really made terrific strides these past few years, putting policies in place, with sponsorships, bringing in programming that resulted in a profit, a little profit, but a profit nonetheless, and answered the charge of this board. And I want to thank you for your hard work and efforts, and I look forward to working with the new board. I see the chairman of the PAC, Mr. Ryan, is here. Welcome and congratulate, assuming this passes, congratulations. And I just want to echo Ms. Glassman's point, you know, this board, with Mr. Hensley's support, I think some time ago, did recommend that we go out and do an evaluation of the web report, and you now have a roadmap on how to be successful going forward, and we hope, although you don't have to, we do hope that that will be an important guide for you, and we look forward to your continued success.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. No, you go ahead. You second it.
I'll second it. Other questions?
You're going to make me read a resolution, aren't you?
The approval will have to be conditioned on two pieces, and one is final review by Town. Secondly, to the extent this contemplates moving the funds from the revenue front to the Performing Arts Center board, I think we'll need board finance approval for that.
Yes. So just to clarify the motion, the motion wouldn't be to approve the proposed finance operations agreement between the Town of Simsbury and the Performing Arts Center, providing for the seasonal operation of Simsbury Farms Performing Arts Center by the Simsbury Performing Arts Center, Inc., subject to final review by Town Council and approval by the Board of Finance. Is that correct?
The transfer of funds.
Transfer of funds.
Is that your motion?
That is correct, minus the Simsbury Farms part, but yes, that is correct.
Could that be your second?
That would be my second, yes. Ready to go. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes. You're welcome.
And we welcome you back to announce next year's contract, when you're ready. Next item is back before us. If you recall, our first organizational meeting, there was a request to amend the rules of procedure, to define temporary absence of the first-electman. I did refer this to council, and it is not appropriate for the board to adopt the procedural rules in that matter. So the opinion is before you tonight.
Okay.
Any further action?
There was a couple other items. So Town Attorney wrote us an opinion.
Yes.
Thank you for that.[1799.92] Thank you for that. I presume by your memo, you didn't take exception with some of the other minimal changes. And then you gave advice with respect to paragraph two, special meeting. The language that you proposed was, "In addition, the first selectmen shall call a special meeting upon receipt of the request signed by blank members of the Board of Selectmen. The meeting shall include a proposed agenda." So that is potentially permissible to...
Yeah, the charter specifically references in the section defining the Board of Selectmen that the Board of Selectmen shall establish a procedure for the call of special meetings. And the issue I had with the way it was written was more of a logistical procedural one, and getting three, I think it takes an action of the Board of Selectmen to do anything, and three can't take an action. And the way most towns avoid that is through this petition language I have given you. It could be three, it could be four, it could be however many you want. But you would petition the first selectman, and she would have the obligation to call a special meeting upon receipt of that petition, signed by the number that you choose.
I did have a question from Mrs. Havner. If she were to consult with other members of the board to call a special meeting, that could be considered a violation?
There is a specific exception to the definition of meeting within the FOIA that carves out communications on the calling of a meeting. So that is not considered to be a meeting if a majority or more, a quorum of a multi-member agency, communicate with one another over the wisdom of calling a meeting. You can see that would be a...
Even though they have an agenda item discussed.
Well...
I just want to make sure that we don't...
No, I think if a member of the agency, in this case, the Board of Selectmen, felt strongly about an agenda item that they wanted considered by the full agency, FOI allows a mechanism to do that.
Great. Mike?
Mary, I would almost envision this, trying to think outside the box, that a minimal number of selectmen could ask you to call a meeting. And to my thinking, two people, my understanding is that two members do not constitute a board meeting.
That's correct.
And that way, it's not partisan, it's not anything, and there's an issue, whatever it is, raises it to you, and it goes from there.
Most...
Just, I just want to caution. I mean, that means one person could say, "I want a meeting next Tuesday," and we could have meetings every week.
I'm not advocating that. I think I said two.
Which is fine. I'm free, but, you know, I just want to be careful. You know, I think you're right, Mike. You point out, you know, people can put things on an agenda. We've posted the agendas, dates of the meetings, the public has noticed. I'm just, from an administrative point of view, you know, getting a letter from a member of the board saying, "I want a meeting next Thursday," trying to logistically schedule that, give the public adequate notice. And then what if next week, well, somebody says, "Oh, yeah? Well, I wasn't here, so I want that meeting." I just, it's, I don't know what we're trying to fix. We've had meetings, people can put things on the agenda. I just, you know, it's up to the board, but I'm just administratively, it takes us time to post, advertise, notice, make sure we get a quorum. On the other hand, you know, maybe if you are worried about that, then maybe you want to put in there notice of folks who are not going to be at a meeting, because we oftentimes don't know till last minute, folks won't be at a meeting. And then sometimes there's not a quorum. So, I mean, there's things that happen, but if you start to put all of those possibilities into the rules, it could get a little complicated. Lisa?
Thanks for your point. I think we're all trying to make sure that there is a way to call a special meeting. I want to mention that, you know, for the past 100 years, we've never, ever been done without this. And I want to thank you for the courtesy. Whenever a member, one member has asked for a special meeting, we have tried to accommodate that. And I believe you have accommodated a special meeting. So there's a question of whether you feel that we need to go beyond the courtesy that has been extended throughout our town's history to do a rule. And we can certainly do that, if you feel that we can. And we could do more rules, like Mary suggested about giving notice that you're not going to be there, when you know you're going on vacation, or something's come up, that you can't reschedule a business trip. And we could require that in our rules, or we could just extend courtesies, as we have always done, and do that. So it's just a question of whether people feel something has changed, that we need a rule, or whether we want to continue with the courtesies we have always extended. I think if, you know, the first selectman went crazy and refused to do any meetings, a rule might be appropriate, but that has never happened in our town's history, whether it's Republican or Democrat. So I don't see the need for it, but I'm not averse to it in principle. I mean, I think we all want to accommodate every member here, and I think we have.
I would just add one thing on the number. The regulations like this that I have seen have a fairly high number, because it's intended to protect against, it's a check and balance type rule.
Exactly.
If the first select, hypothetical first selectman is just refusing to hold a meeting on a particular item, and there's a consensus of the body that the meeting ought to be held, then upon a petition like this, the presiding officer has no choice but to hold the meeting. So it's intended for that scenario, rather than...
Holding multiple meetings, yeah.
Yeah, if I could just clarify, nothing in these rules, whether I intended to over, I didn't intend to overstep anything here. Again, I was just taking a stab at it. It was not directed at the sitting first selectman or anyone else that would have been in that seat. It was, this is the beginning of the term, that's the time to do the rules, let's take a look at them. It's gotten a little bigger than intended, and I didn't appreciate your time, but that wasn't what I set out to do. But I agree with you, that was where my thinking went. And in the event that, again, three people wanted an item to be considered, and three people didn't, there wouldn't be a meeting under our current structure. And in this structure, there could be. I don't envision that happening right now, you're right. And the courtesy could continue to be there. And, you know, I'm comfortable with how we all operate, but, you know, potentially down the road or other boards, I don't know. Those rules are up to them.
And I think, no offense taken, I think it's important to always look at our rules, and should something come up down the road that we feel needs to be revisited, we certainly can do that. My only concern is public notice. If you were going to build in a request for a meeting, then you'd have to give more than the 24-hour notice, because I think that the public wouldn't ordinarily think we were meeting on a Saturday morning, or a Friday afternoon, or something. And so, you know, I think we should take a look and see if people want things on the agenda, or want meetings, and they're not being held, and absolutely put it back on the agenda. But I agree with Lisa. So far, we've had trouble with quorums on other boards, and late notice of folks not telling us. And we've tried to correct that other ways, rather than having a requirement that people have to tell you 72 hours ahead of time. So always good to look and see, and I appreciate taking a look at the rules, and certainly can revisit if folks feel that they're necessary.
I'm comfortable pressing forward. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your consideration.
Next item is approving the demolition of the existing house at Dewey Farm. This is back before the board. The board asked that town staff look at renovating the Dewey Farmhouse. Tom Roy has an update for us. He doesn't come with any money, unfortunately.
No.
So he comes only with the recommendation. So if the board feels this is the course they'd like to follow, then we will direct staff to find funding in this year's budget or in next year's budget. Welcome.
I guess since the passing of Dewey, the town's been in possession of the property there. We've gone to lengths to clean up the exterior of the property, just general overall aesthetics. We've removed all of the contents of the house. We've removed any of the chemicals and hazardous materials that were in the house, which now that everything's all cleaned up, we get a really good look at this house, which unfortunately doesn't have a lot of redeeming characteristics, and it's essentially become a liability for the town. At this point, electricity in the house has been shut off at the main breaker. The electrical system in the house is in such a condition that it's truly a fire hazard. So we did not want to have any energized power within the house. We would need a completely new HVAC system, new foundation work. And even if you were to take on all of these various tasks, when you're done, you end up with a chopped-up farmhouse that has narrow staircases, no closets, strange room layouts, and no really redeeming characteristics. So I would recommend that, as a course of protecting the town against any liabilities associated with owning an abandoned building, that we demolish the structure. Our conservative cost estimate, including monies for asbestos or any other remediation, is 18,500.
Thanks, Tom. Any questions?
Yes. That the explanation here said that if this is acceptable, Public Works will issue a bid for qualified demolition contract to remediate all hazardous material. So is this for demolition, or is it also for remediation?
This would include remediation, and then the follow-on demolition.
You have to do one before you do the other.
Right. I just wanted to clarify, because the list on front is just demolition, and you mentioned just now that you had remediated, so I just wanted to make sure that...
We remediated the physical contents of the house.
Yeah.
But things like if there was insulation, if there was asbestos siding, if there was asbestos shingles. Asbestos seems to be the one that we always tend to find in the houses of this era.
Right.
That we would have to just go through and do caution. And we have a little bit of room within that number for just past history from houses we've demolished in town, what we think we might spend for remediation first.
Is there any long-term plan for this property? And if so, is there a purchaser that might pay for the demolition, or is there something else that's going to happen that might cover the cost?
Yes. So, welcome to the Board of Selectmen. We have talked about this previously.
I'm sure you have. I'm sorry.
That's why I want to give you the history. So the board directed staff to first see if the house could be renovated and fixed, and what the cost would be, and to report back to the board. So we think Tom's saying tonight, no, we can't renovate it.
I didn't know if there was a plan.
Nope. So now the next step is to identify the costs, where the funds for the demolition would come from. And then there'll certainly be some options for the town, and those will come back to the Board of Selectmen. The options have included everything previously that we've talked about is farming, the land. And we did put a farm bid, an RFP, out, and only farmed one piece, because the house was on the other piece. And also, we've had suggestions to sell the land and to use the funds for open space. So that will come back to the board after tonight's discussion.
I was just looking for where the funding is going to fit into that plan.
Exactly.
Another question?
Oh, okay. Two, actually. And one is, to date, what have we spent on the work we've done?
Off the top of my head, it's in the neighborhood of 16,000, give or take.
16, okay.
The board, I think, had authorized one contract to clean up the farm and to rehab, you know, just stabilize it. That was the only contract approved by the board.
And my second question is around timing. So say tonight, you get the approval to go ahead and bid this out. How long will it take before you actually, you know, that process, and then actually are into the demolition?
We could probably be done in about eight weeks, start to finish.
Well, we have to identify the funds. Right now, it's not in the budget, so...
Right. That was clearly with the assumption that money was there. I'm talking just absolute as fast as we could go, in terms of putting out a bid, getting in bidders, and having somebody ready to go. And then, of course, that's depending upon what kind of snow we get between now and then.
None. Tom, thank you for your work on this. Two questions. One, in terms of, you said there's no redeeming value to the house, so it is not a historic building in need of preservation?
It is not. And as much as I know you toured the house with me once, it wasn't a case of adding some new curtains. It...
Yes. It was scary.
And I want to thank Tom as well for inviting the Historic Society through as well, just to confirm that there is no...
So I just want the public to know that it has been evaluated by members from the Historic Society, and that there is no historic significance to it. The second thing I wanted to point out is that the conditions, as you find them today, are risk management issue for the town. And so in doing this, we are reducing our risk of liability. Is that correct?
I mean, we now own, we've cleaned it up, but it's still, you know, it's an abandoned building, it doesn't have any neighbors right around it. I mean, it's, you know, it's a place that's an attractive nuisance. And the other thing with the Historic Society, we also went through all of the contents before to make sure that if there was anything that they found important. So, and they were diligent. We were up in the attic last January, I believe. It was, they were going through every box, and I know they grabbed a few pictures and a few other things. So we've been very careful and diligent in this process.
Thank you.
Questions? Is the board comfortable with directing Tom to go out for a bid and come back to the board with recommendations for funding and next steps?
I'll make that motion.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item is to approve the use of the Simsbury Town Hall parking lot for the 2013 Holiday Collection Drive for Veterans, Sunday, December 15th, from noon to 2:00 p.m. I want to thank State Representative John Hampton and the VFW, Simsbury VFW Ladies Auxiliary. This is always a very successful drive, and certainly very important for our veterans. A motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. My next item is approving a residential...
Excuse me, Mary. I need to step out for this.
Thank you. The record will reflect that Mr. Payne is recusing himself from this discussion. Thank you, Mr. Payne. Tom, I wanted to do a quick overview of what the Residential Recycling Registration Form and Fee is intended to do.
Okay. We revised our ordinance back a few months ago to essentially allow the town to, instead of flow controlling our residential recycling to a designated facility. In the past, our ordinance required that everything picked up curbside by whichever collector was doing that work had to go to CRA. With some of the changes in the Mid-Connecticut project, and some of the struggles that have really come out in terms of CRA's longevity, and the potential that their payment for recyclables, because recyclables actually have a value when they're dropped off, at a fair minimum, aren't going to meet market value. I think we were very aggressive when we changed our ordinances to reflect the market. And basically, we've said that we are allowing our haulers in town to bring the recycling to any legally authorized facility to collect residential recycling. They have to provide us with reports of what they've collected on a quarterly basis, which is required by the state. And what we would like to do is, under the ordinance, authorize the first selectman to set a registration fee, which would be done on a per-ton basis. So for every ton of recyclables that they collect, we're recommending a fee of $10 be paid to the town on a quarterly basis. And this fee that we'd be setting up, the $10 a ton, would be from this coming January to the end of the fiscal year in June.
What does that generate in income, roughly?
In a given year, it'd be about $30,000.
That's similar to what we...
Exactly. What we are also hoping is that by allowing the haulers that freedom to bring it to the facilities of their choice, they can, one, either sell it to a facility that's offering a higher price than CRA, or, two, they could sell it to a facility that is closer, therefore requiring them to have shorter distances for their haul trucks. And again, there's the real potential that this is going to allow win-win, where the town's going to receive the same, if not more than what we would have already been getting through CRA. But we're allowing our haulers the opportunity to have market-based selection, which we in turn believe is going to reflect back to the rates they charge our residents.
And, no, Lori, if you had a chance to speak on behalf of the recycling committee. Okay.
Someone in support of this and the $10.
Yep.
He also asked to keep the money, but we'll talk about that another night.
It's all about the money tonight.
You weren't here for that, Tom. We'll talk about that another time. Tonight, we're just considering.
I walked into that one.
Any questions?
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
We can bring Mr. Payne back in, if he wants to come. Next item is a request from Nancy to be on the agenda, the creation of a Economic Development Task Force. As I indicated to Nancy, I did ask town staff for a review and some suggestions, and we've got some excellent suggestions. And I also suggested that this be referred to the Economic Development Commission, since we are including an Economic Development Initiative, and they are a committee of Congresses. So Nancy?
Yes, thank you, First. I thank you very much, Mary, for putting this on the agenda. I think with the recent loss of the Hartford, and so many folks talking also about the fact that the car tax is going to inevitably, or very potentially, take $6 million from our town in revenue, needless to say, we've got quite the job ahead of us. And so the idea behind bringing this initiative forward was to create a committee that brought more volunteer pool, a different skill set, to the committee. It would, of course, be made up of folks from the Board of Selectmen, the Economic Development Commission, Main Street, the chamber, but also bring in folks that have skill sets related to economic development and real estate and marketing. And I think that ties nicely to where we are right now as a community, and some of the good work that we've done. We've got a lot of charrettes and studies, things that I think we're eager to share with the development community. And the first phase of the marketing study did conclude back in August that we had some options of a lot of things that we could undertake, but the recommendation for that phase two is to the tune of $120,000. It's a fairly good chunk of change. And my comment of our taxing tax situation that we are facing, that this commission made up of, or this task force made up of folks that have skill sets can take on, in a very swift and immediate fashion, some of the things that I outlined in the submission that I supplied. Again, one of which was a broader pool of talent from the town. We've done such a good job taking, making the best of those folks. And yet, this is a missing pool of people that we have... a missing pool of people that we haven't quite targeted. And those folks would be the end users to all of our marketing and communications. So, I think it would behoove us to talk to them, find out what they want to hear and know from us and about us, engaging them early in the process to make sure we're going about it the right way. I think with that, some of the things that are being proposed that we would actually have to pay a consultant for might be able to be done by this committee as well, which could be of some savings to the town, and in utilizing their expertise, or their expertise, rather. This isn't being proposed as something, I know we've got task forces that go on beyond the two-year window, being co-terminous with the Board of Selectmen. It would have to be re-upped each year. The idea wasn't really to do that. It was to take a very swift and immediate approach to some of the things that we could implement right now, get to that implementation phase with this, have a commission or a task force that has clearly defined goals, a timetable and some measurables to really move through some of these items quite quickly. And I think it sends a nice message to the development community that we're doubling our efforts when it comes to moving forward with these things, so that we can get right to the implementation phase. So, with that, and in addition to some brief discussions I had with you, Mary, I appreciate Hiram being here, and I hope that he might walk through some of his feedback. I suggested that he chair this committee, and I think it's because he's the one that really is behind a lot of the efforts that the town is doing, and could really help to, as I said, really move this commission along through its mission swiftly. So, Hiram, I wondered if you, we got a memo just before our meeting that summarized?
Yeah, I asked Hiram to just review the proposal that Nancy had submitted, so thank you, Nancy, for giving that to us. A couple of questions that I asked Hiram to address was, how does this fit within the Economic Development Commission? Because they are in our charter as the economic development initiative, and they did request and fund the Phase One of the marketing study. So, out of respect for the members of the Economic Development Commission, I wanted to make sure that they were consulted and involved in the process. Also, I was asking Hiram to comment on maybe some of the funding that might be needed, because there obviously, some of these items would require funding.
Right.
So, I wanted to just get a sense of what, how much money we're talking about. So, thank you, Hiram.
Sure. Divided the response into three parts, Mary. Basically, the parties that should be involved, obviously, the Economic Development Commission, based on their statutory authority, needs to be involved in the front end of this, and probably discussed with them as soon as possible to sort of formulate the direction of it. The other thing that I think is important is that, as we've done in all the other studies that we've done recently, the largest studies that we've done in the last six or seven years, anyway, we've formed subcommittees like the Town Center Charrette Committee, the Route 10 Study Committee, the Wheaton Village District Study Committee, and even the Hartford, most recently, the Hartford Land Use Study Committee. And you have included Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, Zoning Commission, Planning Commission, Design Review Board, and that'll be a challenge, because the Design Review Board's all new now, so it's interesting. Economic Development Commission, of course, and in some cases, the Historic District Commission. Whether that would be appropriate in this particular initiative or not is a question, but certainly, they could be as well. So, I think that covers all the major land use and other boards as well, that ought to be involved in this particular process. My suggestion would be to ask the chairman or First Selectmen of each of those boards, as the case may be, to appoint a person or two, try to figure out just what the membership ought to be. We could certainly do that in the near future. And then, figure out how many people going forward would make up an appropriate number of people to meet on this committee. I think that the boards or commissions that ought to be asked to participate are the ones that I didn't see, number, step number one, see, are the ones that I just mentioned. Included in that are two of the main organizations that are constantly involved in economic development and business development in the town, and that would be the Main Street and the Chamber. Those are the two main ones. Now, there are obviously a lot of other organizations in town. I wouldn't necessarily say that those groups would be included as members of the committee, but certainly, as in all the other committees that we've had, stakeholders are invited to various meetings depending upon what the particular issues are at any given time. So, if we're talking about something in Terrifield, obviously, the TVA is going to be involved, or somebody from Terrifield would be involved. Same with the South End, same with the North End, same with Crowley's Corners, or whatever it happens to be. So, those people could come in as stakeholders, depending upon what the particular issue might be. Step two, and perhaps the biggest challenge, would be budgeting or funding. How do we do it? Phase One of the marketing study did indicate that about $120,000 would be needed to do Phase Two. We don't have a detailed breakdown of that yet, and what I was thinking would be appropriate would be to ask Fair Weather Consulting for a more detailed breakdown of just what they would propose to do, to get an idea, kind of a plan going forward as to what they would recommend. Not necessarily saying that they would necessarily get the plan, or they would do all that work, but to give us kind of a, sort of a blueprint of how they would recommend we go forward. As far as I know, people were fairly happy with the results of the Phase One study. I wouldn't say that there was a tremendous amount of brand-new information there. People that have lived here for a long time, or that do this for a living, thought that a lot of the information was new information, no question, but nothing tremendously new. And so, what we need to do is make sure that we update all our existing documents, and as part of doing that, back in 1996, I'm sure you all remember, the Board of Selectmen approved the Strategic Economic Development Plan, and that was a plan that needs to be updated. That plan could be updated. It's not a thin document, so it would take a while to do that, but that would be part of the work as well. So, this would need to be funded in some way, either through the municipal budgeting process. Grants could possibly also be applied for and obtained, and possibly, private donations, too, whether people felt that it was really worthwhile, maybe they have a particular interest, and they want to see something go forward, so they might fund that as well. So, there are two or three different ways it could happen. I would think primarily, though, looking at part of it being funded through the municipal budgeting process, perhaps on a two-year basis. I don't think doing it in one year is going to be economically possible, although if the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen did approve that, that we certainly could do that. The last thing that I had in addition to is who participates in this thing. I think there are really a couple of things that are really key. One is that this has to be aimed toward implementation. It can't be another study. I think people have all indicated that the Phase One marketing study did tell us essentially what the situation is now, and what is the case going forward. What we need to do is take some specific parts of that, those recommendations, and aim those toward implementation. It's suggested that the funding for this be funded, probably as a two-fiscal-year project, just because of the way the timing breaks down. And the participation, it's really important that this committee, this subcommittee, this group, the task force, be really committed to doing this. It's a lot of work, there's no question. I don't suspect that we're going to get any more staff in our department, and I don't anticipate that. And so, in order to secure that, we get good feedback and participation by all the people involved in the committee, we need to make sure that those of the selected are willing to put a little bit of time into doing that and helping out. We could possibly save some of the money. It might not necessarily cost us a whole $120,000, it might cost less than that, if we're able to do some of that work ourselves. So, I think that's important to know as well. Staff is willing to lead the effort, and as a continuation of the current economic development activities that we undertake. I just wanted to make one comment sort of about that. We engage probably on a daily basis in talking to two or three different people that are doing things in town, or want to do things in town. There are several significant projects, some in the town center, two or three that we've talked about before, that are very close to coming forward. I think people are going to be very, hopefully, happy with them in terms of their size and how they fit into the planning efforts that have gone forward. And I think the economic impacts of those will be positive for the town in the near future. So, we do work on that stuff every single day. It's not just trying to figure out how far away from Welland you need to be, or what the setback is. We do call a lot of people. They call us, too, actually. And then, what I did finally, in the last part of the memo that I put together, is say that these are things that could be done as part of this effort, and I listed six or seven things that the items would be able to be done as part of this. I think, again, update the 1996 Strategic Economic Development Plan is key, although that's a nice document, it's a good Bible to go from, but again, that's not an implementation document. So, I think updating that is information that's good, but we need to implement beyond that, and that's important that we do that. We need to provide a sound basis for funding economic developments, whether it's through DECD, or some other agency, state agency, or possibly even federal agency. We could do that. There are a number of ways that could be done, too. There are a lot of grants out there right now for housing. Some of them have to do with workforce housing. And the other thing that's important is to raise a town's positive economic development profile, not only in Connecticut, but throughout the larger region as well. So, these are some of the other things that I think would be beneficial toward doing this going forward. Certainly willing to proceed at whatever phase the Board dictates, happy to discuss this with any other boards or commissions that you think are appropriate, and happy to involve as many, if not all, the boards and commissions as possible in town.
Thank you. Lisa.
I thank Nancy for bringing this initiative to the Board, and I certainly agree with you, Hiram, that many of these goals are laudable, and should at least be evaluated as to whether they're funded or not, and we'll go through the budgeting process. And I know Main Street has the ability to do some of the things that the marketing study has recommended, and so, who should do it, and how we continue funding. I do have a few questions, and I'll get to the specifics of them, but my general concern is, I don't really understand how this proposed committee is different than what the Economic Development Committee is tasked to do. The state statute says the Economic Development Committee shall conduct research into the economic conditions and trends in its municipality, shall make recommendations to appropriate officials and agencies of its municipality regarding action to improve its economic condition and development. They shall seek to coordinate the activities of and coordinate with unofficial bodies organized to promote such economic development, and may advertise, prepare, print, distribute books, maps, charts, pamphlets, which in its judgment will further its official purposes. So, to me, I sort of hear the same mission, and I would just want a clarification from the Economic Development Committee with their input, sort of what their role will be. I mean, the marketing study was something that initiated out of the Economic Development Committee. I brought it to you, Mary, as liaison, and asked you to put it in your budget, which you did, and then we presented it to the Board of Selectmen, and it was adopted unanimously by the Board of Selectmen as part of their budget. And so, I think what I'm hearing tonight is a proposal to take their initiative away from them, and to have it implemented by a new group. And so, I'm, you know, I'm open to hearing discussion on that. But I think at the end of the day, I'm not sure what the Economic Development Committee's role is. Is this, are you recommending that we do away with the Economic Development Committee? Is this new task force going to be supplemental to it? I just wasn't sure. I didn't understand the relationship.
So, that was just one question, or I thought you said you had two? I didn't mean that in that regard.
I have even...
No, no. And that's fine. And having served on the Economic Development Commission for, Commission for seven, eight, nine years, and also as its vice chair, I've seen it sort of ebb and flow through its activities, and certainly, right now, they're working on the school pamphlet, and website initiatives, and different things like that. This task force is not to take away, and it speaks, I think, well to augmenting the mission that they have. As a community right now, I think we're at such a heightened situation in regards to economic development. We have in front of us a lot of work. Out of Phase Two came a tremendous amount of recommendations, and I think, if anything, what we have right now is, you know, a need to move swiftly with this. And then, again, my proposal was not to do away with that, it was to support it. It's also to do it in a very condensed timeframe, and to bring into what is missing from that. And those are really more skill sets and expertise that speak to who the end users are in all this information that we're going to be putting together. So, whether, and I don't think there is the money to spend $120,000, and whether it's 60 over two years, what we're really talking about doing is creating messaging materials, branding around, reaching out to a community who, as part of this commission, could actually be actively involved in creating those materials. So, aside from a lot of the work that the Economic Development Commission has done and will continue to do, I expect they'll be actively engaged in the Hartford Subcommittee and putting together some of those meetings and showcases, and groups that will come into that facility, and be involved in doing, hopefully, things like developer showcases and some other things like that. While they're busy doing those things, this group, again, with its skill set and a defined, specific mission and timeframe, could be more associated with looking at specific things associated with the marketing study, with an economic development expansion and retention plan. They say the best retention plan, the best expansion plan that you get is actually retaining your businesses. Eighty percent of your growth comes from that. So, it, again, to answer your question, and I hope I've done so, it is not to take away from that commission, it's to support. Absolutely.
I will still make the recommendation as to whether to fund Phase Two. That will come from...
I think in concert with this group, but I think this group can be well-suited, again, with its skill set, to make more of that evaluation. So, there is, it is suggested that folks from the EDC would be part of this, and...
Do you believe the skill set of the other boards and commissions are more appropriate than the EDC members to make this call?
What I'm talking about on this particular group is including folks from the Economic Development Real Estate.
Oh, that's different than what Mr. Peck is suggesting.
Well, if I could just ask, the Economic Development Commission has not seen this yet.
Right.
They do have a meeting on Thursday, they do have on their agenda goals and objectives. I think it would be in our best interest to refer this to them and have them comment on it, and get some input as to how they see this fitting in. Certainly, more people working to benefit the town is always a good thing.
Yes.
But we want to make sure we're not duplicating town staff. We do have the Hartford Subcommittee, all of these folks are on the Hartford Subcommittee. So, we'd now be adding another role to the Hartford Subcommittee. So, the same folks who serve on that will now serve on this, which is, again, you know, the more conversations, the more involvement is certainly appropriate. So, you know, I think Lisa's raising some questions, and if the EDC, who are tasked under the charter and the state statute to consider economic development efforts, it seems to me a courtesy to show that to them and to have them comment as well. Do you have any objection to that?
I just have a question.
I ask the proponent.
No, actually, I'd like to hear from the Board if I could.
Well, I'm just asking if you have any problem with the EDC commenting before we vote on...
I don't have any problem with that, but I would like to hear from the Board as to what they would have to say with the overall proposal.
Oh, sure, but I'm just, I think I'm trying to get an answer to Lisa's question.
So, can we do both? I mean, given the time of year and the fact that we want to get a jumpstart, I absolutely agree with getting their thoughts and input, and obviously, having the EDC being a big part of this. Can we form the task force, start to identify the members while EDC helps us define the scope, gets it going, provides that content, so that the mission is then ready to go when we've got the members and we hit the ground running?
I think this is a good idea to have a special meeting. I just, you know, if you're voting on something before somebody has the courtesy...
I like that.
I happen to agree with Lisa, I just, you know, the EDC serves on the Hartford Subcommittee. This is another Subcommittee. They are tasked with putting their budget. They have a meeting on Thursday, it's Monday, so, you know, we're not talking about waiting a long time.
Fair enough.
There's, you know, there's some other folks, I think, that we should hear from. I just, I noticed, there are some folks that aren't a member of Main Street or the Chamber, so, are they going to, there's the North Village Group, which are another group of business owners, and also, some businesses that aren't affiliated with either of those organizations, are we going to open those up? And as we traditionally do with some of our other subcommittees, Technology Task Force, do you want us to advertise for folks who want to serve? And that way, we'll get a better cross-section of folks. Once we define what it is, consistent with EDC, we would cast a wide net of folks who have talent that maybe we don't know about. You know, I think we've got to be careful not to pick people we know, because those are people we know, but there may be other folks who want to serve that have a skill set for what we're looking for. So, you know, I think we're hearing a lot of positive things tonight. I think some of the issues certainly involve giving courtesy to the Commission that has the cognizance over the efforts and making sure they're comfortable and consistent, especially as they set their goals for budgets. Look, if they don't recommend funding Phase Two of the marketing plan, to have a committee that oversees Phase Two of the marketing plan, isn't really going to make a lot of sense, if everybody doesn't buy in. So, we should at least know that upfront. So, you know, I think a couple of days of, it would be a nice courtesy to have them involved, and have, give them the opportunity to see not only the proposal, but Hiram's analysis, and Hiram will be there as well.
Hiram will be at the meeting on Thursday?
And Lisa is liaison, and as I offer to Nancy, you know, certainly, Lisa and Nancy would be able to report back to the Board as the liaison, and as the interests provide. Lisa.
One other issue I had is, this will be a creation of the Board of Selectmen? Yes, not a town initiative, right? So, the one thing I have a concern with, and it's nothing personal to Mr. Peck, because I have utmost respect for him, is if it is a creation of the Board, we need to be responsive and accountable to the public, and so, I do believe it should be chaired by an elected official. by an elected official. But of course, consulting with Mr. Peck on his recommendations, I believe that's appropriate and, you know, would certainly welcome his expertise. But I do think it should be chaired so that we can be held accountable. And also, I think it's protective of Mr. Peck because I don't want him to be accused, "Why didn't you put this one on the board? Why didn't you put this one? You're my favorite." It gives him a level of protection that I think we owe town staff. So, that would be my procedural recommendation.
Other, Mike?
I had, excuse me, a couple of thoughts. One is that I would really like us to see if we're going to create a task force that they really have a goal and a mission, a specific timeline, so that if there's, use business deliverables.
Yep.
We know what we're getting, when they're supposed to get it to us and everything else. I think your point is very good about, having worked with Hyrum from planning, he is phenomenal. I can't say enough good stuff about you, Hyrum. And not because I'm not there anymore, but, but I'm not there anymore. But seriously, you do a great job and bring definitely a different perspective that I never dealt with before. So, I appreciate that. But I think we want to do that, and I think bringing as many people as we can, as long as it's manageable, you know, you can end up with a horde and then you kind of go nowhere, and I don't think that's what anybody's intending. But to try to do something innovative, I think it'd be a good thing for us, especially at this juncture. And one last thought I'll throw out there is, we could possibly find a graduate student that wants to do his final thesis. And, oh my God, look what I did.
Simsbury Marketing Plan.
Hey, let that be a nice little thing to hang on your, I don't know, come up with a diploma or something, but nonetheless.
Yeah, no, I think those are good points, Mike. I appreciate that. There also is a new initiative which Hyrum is going to report on that involves Simsbury Main Street and Mr. Wagner, a very benefactor in town. And I'm not sure we know all the details of that initiative and how that initiative might fit in with this initiative and the Economic Development Commission. So, I think there's a few pieces out there that if we could bring those back to the board, the board could take some...
So, can I recommend that we refer this to the Economic Development Commission to help us refine the scope mission in charge of this and simultaneously start the process of identifying folks so that we can act quickly at that potential special meeting?
Can I second that?
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the discussion this evening, as I said, and reiterating your, my appreciation for your putting this on the agenda. And as I said, I think it sends a strong message to the development community that, gosh darn it, we're pretty serious about economic development. So, thank you.
You're welcome. We have a motion. We have a second all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is review of Board of Education negotiated contracts. I want to welcome Superintendent of Schools Matt Curtis, Mike Goman, Chair of the Board of Ed Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee, and Burke Leclair, who's the Business Manager, and Lydia Tadone, who chairs the Board of Ed. I want to thank you for being here. Per statute, this Board of Selectmen has the authority to review contracts. No action is necessary. However, if the Board votes to reject the recommendations, then they do go to arbitration. So, there's a very important role for the Board of Selectmen. And welcome.
Thank you. And good evening. For the record, my name is Mike Goman. I'm at 45 Old Stone Crossing. I'm a member of the Board of Education and the Chair of the Personnel Negotiations Committee. With me tonight are the Board of Ed Chair Lydia Tadone, our Superintendent of Schools Matt Curtis, and our Business Manager Burke Leclair. So, they'll all have some input here or can answer questions as we go along. A little bit of background. For me, this is the fourth time I've handled the contract negotiation process in the, I guess, 12 years that I've been on the Board of Education. We, during the year and during the interim periods between contract negotiations, we, as you can imagine, spend quite a bit of time talking about compensation issues. So, it's not only at this time of the cycle that we are talking about compensation. Compensation's constantly being reviewed and compared against our district DRGs. I always, too many, too many acronyms. Our DRGs are District Reference Groups. And we understand the seriousness of the contract negotiation process simply because it represents such a large financial obligation of the town. So, it's a, as I mentioned, it's a process that comes up every three years. We go through a fairly extensive process to negotiate the new contract. It involves, at a minimum, several dozen meetings. During the meeting periods, we're constantly analyzing the data about our own district and our structure, compensation structure, and our contract language to see what we want to or need to update. We're also analyzing on actually a weekly basis the settlements that are being made in other districts. And as a number of you may know, we work with Tom Mooney, who is our attorney from Shipman Goodwin. Tom is literally the guy that wrote the book on Connecticut school law and negotiates the vast majority, represents school districts in negotiating the vast majority of the teachers' contracts in the state. Shipman and Goodwin through Tom Mooney provides us this weekly update of what the contract settlements are coming in at, and that's very important information. The process is fairly straightforward, but it is set down, as Mary described, by the state. We exchange proposals, both on compensation and benefits issues and on contract language, starting in late July, early August, and that continues through to the end of September. As of October 1, we go into mediation. That's again, set out. The month of October is absorbed in mediation, which is a formal process. We bring in an outside mediator, and that mediator helps us try to get to agreement with the bargaining group on new compensation and contract language. So, that takes place through October. If we're unable to get to a mediated agreement by the end of October, then beginning November 1, we go into arbitration. We were fortunate that we were able to get through the mediation process and arrive at a tentative agreement, which was what we're going to talk about here tonight. Just to give you a sense of that, again, this is, this involves dozens of meetings in a very short period of time. It's an enormous amount of work, both for our staff and for the board members. The final mediation session this time around, and this isn't, this one wasn't atypical of the past ones, it started at 5:00 in the afternoon, I think on a Thursday, if I recall, and we signed the memorandum of understanding about 20 after 4:00 in the next morning. So, it goes close to 12 hours. It's a very arduous process, but I think it actually serves everyone pretty well. So, both of the agreements that are, both of the contracts that are before you this evening were negotiated under the timelines and the provisions of the State of Connecticut Teacher Negotiation Act. As Mary points out, once a tentative agreement has been reached and ratified by the Board of Education, which has been, and the respective certified bargaining unit, in this case, we have two that we're talking about tonight, the administrators and the SEA, the Education Association, which is our teachers. Once that's been done, the contracts must be filed with the town clerk, and then the Commissioner of Education, the town clerk is required to give public notice of receipt of the agreements. The terms of the agreements are binding upon the legislative body unless the legislative body, which is your group, rejects the contract at a special or regular meeting within 30 days of the filing. No vote to approve is necessary. As Mary pointed out, if no vote is taken, the contract is deemed approved. The time limits involved are strictly construed, again, all part of the State of Connecticut Negotiation Act. If the contract were to be rejected, the matter of the contract is then subject to arbitration. Five days following rejection is treated as the arbitration date. The parties must either designate the representative arbitrators or inform the Commissioner of Education that they have chosen a single arbitrator. If rejected by the legislative body, it is important to determine the issues to be submitted to the arbitration panel in that the two negotiating parties reach tentative agreement on all issues. The members of the Board of Education, for reference, who served on the committee for these bargaining agreements are me as Chair, Mike Goman, Chris Kelly, Mike Wade, and Todd Burick. The Board of Education, as I mentioned, was represented by counsel and by Tom Mooney of Shipman and Goodwin. So, if I may, I'm going to just take a couple of minutes here and give you some highlights from the two contracts. In the case of the Simsbury Education Association, which again is our, our teachers, and as a reminder, the three-year contract period starts July 1 of next year, 2014, runs through June 30 of 2017. The general wage increase under that contract for each of the three years of the contract is as follows. 2014-15, 1.4%, 2015-2016, 1.5%, and then the last year of the contract, 2016 and 17, 1.6%. Now, the general wage portion of the contract is the most important from our standpoint because it, the vast majority of our teachers, 65, 2/3, 65% or 2/3 of our teachers are on the, on the highest step. So, they're no longer eligible for any sort of step increase, step increase being an increase that occurs as a result of years of seniority. But once you reach the maximum step, then you're at top step, and you no longer are eligible for any annual seniority increase. So, 2/3, again, to repeat that, 2/3 of our SEA members, and that group's about 380 people, 2/3 of them are at the top step. So, they're only eligible for that general wage increase, the 1.4, 1.5, and 1.6. Those who are on step, and that's again roughly a third, and they tend to be our younger teachers, and therefore they're, they come in at lower salaries and they work their way up from a salary standpoint. They get a step increase plus the GWI. In the case of the step increase in the contract, the new contract, it's 1.96 in the first year, 1.72 in the second, and 1.61 in the third. So, if you were to look at it as a young teacher who is also, who is on step and working their way up, they combined would be 3.36 in the first year, 3.22 in the second, and 3.21 in the, in the third. Again, though, I want to bring you back to that 1.4, 1.5, 1.6 because that's 2/3 of our population. So, the increases, whichever, and we look, we look at all our increases when we're comparing ourselves against other school districts in our Derg. We look at it at both GWI and then the step increase. And if you, whichever way you look at it, we're in very good shape from a competitive standpoint. We came in right where we, right where we wanted to be. Another highlight from this contract is the revised premium shares for the health insurance. And the most important thing I want to point out in that case is that we were successful in getting the, a high deductible healthcare plan, HSA plan, put into the contract language. It is mandatory for all new hires. So, all new hires will go into that HDHP plan. And then by the third year, the HDHP plan becomes our core plan. And what that means is that if an existing teacher who was hired prior to the start of this contract wants to stay on either the HMO or PPO, then they have to pay the difference between the high deductible plan and the HMO or PPO, which is significant and will serve as a fairly significant incentive to get people to, to move on to the HDHP plan. And of course, like a lot of groups, the HDHP plan, we believe, will help us control our costs, the increase in our costs better over the long run. Burke is here, and I'm going to let him answer any more detailed questions than this, but let me move on just briefly to the administrators' and supervisors' contract, which was the second contract that we negotiated in this cycle. And again, it's the same timeframe, July 14 to June, end of June 17. The general wage increase, by the way, this, this group is 16 people, so versus the SEA, which is 382. The administrators are a group of only 16 people. The general wage increase is, in the first year of the contract, is 2.25%. And the same increase takes place in the following, in the next two years. So, across each year of the three-year contract, the GWI or general wage increase is 2.25%. We have a little bit of step increase in this contract, but it amounts to 0.33% in the first two years and 0.28% in the last year. So, our, again, trying to follow the way I've explained the other contract, the total between step and general wage, if that applies, is in the first year, 2.58, the second year, 2.58, and the third year, 2.53. Like the SEA contract, we made changes to the healthcare plan, including some additional contributions, and then the introduction of the high deductible plan for new hires. And by the third year, it becomes the core plan. So, you've received the background information relative to these agreements, and we'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have. I'm going to defer to our Business Manager if you get too detailed for me, but he's very good at this.
Thank you, Mike. Thanks very much for your presentation. Questions? Lisa.
This is for Burke. Could you tell us how your administrative spending cost per pupil compare with the Derg in the state, or the administrative?
The Department of Ed has a huge school profile that is compiled after the audits are done and that current expenditures are calculated. There's a significant lag in that. So, the current one, which is on our website, is still looking at the 2011-12 year, because 12-13 is not finished being audited. And then there's some comparative data there, which then has the further lag. But in terms of our admin costs and expenditures, we were actually below the Derg average and state average. We don't have the most current, again, and once the state provides that, we would obviously put that on our website also.
Thank you.
If I may add, a couple of comments from a Board of Ed members' perspective. That's a, sort of a hot button in the community. We hear a lot about our administrative costs. Do we need this? Do we need that? And the board has, in my 12 years, has looked at that issue every year. About every two or three years, we go out and survey. In addition to looking at it every year, we then survey other districts to see what they're doing. You know, how are they organized and what is, what are administrative costs coming in in our reference group? And what we, first of all, what we find is there is no specific state mandated way of kind of organizing that. In other words, the state doesn't say you must call certain people certain titles and so on. So, we find that a lot of districts will have administrators that they actually don't call administrators. But if you ask them, well, does that, that, what's this job description? Does that person teach or do they administrate? Because it sounds like a teacher. And they'll say, well, no, they really don't teach. They might teach a little bit, but they're really administrators. So, it becomes very, virtually impossible in doing this for 12 years. And I'm kind of a critic on budget issues generally. Doing this for 12 years, it's, you cannot get to an apples-to-apples comparison on that. You have to resort to the total administrative cost. So, from my standpoint as a board member, and I think many of our board members feel the same, I want to know that we're comparable on that number, and we are competitive. I also want to know that the way we're organized is doing what we have as our core purpose, which is providing the best possible service to our kids and, and the best possible sort of organizational structure to execute our educational goals. And if we're doing that and we're in the ballpark on the administrative costs overall, then I think it's up to the management team to make those decisions as to how they're organized specifically. We're going to continue to ask them those questions every year because we get asked, and that's our job. But as long as the costs are there and we're staying true to our core mission statement, then I think it's management's decision to run it. These are well-paid professionals that are involved in this business of education, of educating our kids all the time, and I think they are best qualified to make the decisions as to how their teams are put together.
Lisa.
I just wanted to follow up on that and thank you for your comments. And I think that's exactly the right way to evaluate and per pupil cost for administrative, because there is, you're right, different, there are ways to hide administrative costs. So, you do want to look at the whole per pupil cost on administrative costs. And when you do that, you see that Simsbury is below the average in our Derg. And I just want to make sure the public understands that. We are below the average in our Derg for administrative costs.
I think going back to the days of Dave Holden as our Business Manager, and then Burke, the other thing I would point out is that sort of obfuscation in administrative costs isn't allowed. It's, our Business Managers have held our feet to the fire in terms of, you know, if it's an administrator, let's call it an administrator.
That speaks to transparency of your position.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate that.
Other questions?
Just have one. I don't know if this is for Burke or maybe Mike, but as far as the HSA goes, is the town contributing to that, or is that fully employee-funded?
At 70% in year one, goes down to 60% in year two, and 50% in year two.
Is there a requirement for participation with wellness, or is that just a...
There is not a formal wellness component there. And I just want to point out that we've worked closely with the Insurance Advisory Committee of the, of the town. Lindbergh and Ripple serves as the benefits consultant for both the board and town plans. We meet regularly. And one of the things that I'm really pleased about is not just the high deductible health plan, but plan design changes to co-pays, things that we've been trying to modernize have taken place in this contract. Also, one of the things you might not have noticed in the summary is the language to allow for medical insurance carrier consolidation. So, while we're self-insured, we have two different third-party groups that we're working with. And as we move forward with the Affordable Care Act, we really want to have one single group that we, that we have to interface with, and we're very closely with the town, both in the collective bargaining for benefits as well as pension. And this is just evidence of that, and we're very excited to be able to move forward pending this, this contract.
Just one quick question. As you did for the teachers' union, how many of those 16 administrators get step increases now? now?
How many of 16 are on step, Burke?
I believe it's a little, yeah, a little bit under, just, yeah, just a little under, under half. And we were, knowing that we had two retirements in the upcoming year, that's one of the reasons that the step value is, is known to be a little bit higher, because we'll have people who have not topped out. We have, one, two, exactly half.
So eight are on the step.
Thank you.
I had a question. I appreciate all the hard work that goes into settling contracts. That's one of the biggest drivers of the town's budget, and certainly one of the biggest drivers of the Board of Ed. Folks still think that the Board of Selectmen controls the Board of Ed budget, so let's make it clear tonight that the Board of Selectmen doesn't. This is the only role that the Board of Selectmen actually plays in the Board of Ed budget, and that is to take a look at whether we reject contracts, and I know how difficult it is to settle these contracts. But given that the personal costs are the biggest driver of the biggest portion of the town's budget, so the personal costs are the biggest engine that drives the Board of Ed budget, and the Board of Ed budget is 3/4 of the town's budget. So tonight, assuming these contracts go forward, what impact does that have on the budgets that we will see come forward to the voters in May? And, you know, what, what impact, I think, you know, deciding whether to vote or not, you know, vote to reject, I think it's important that we know tonight, will this have a big impact? Are we going to see big increases or what exactly? I know you can't pin down exactly, but what, give us a sense of, of what this means to the town if it goes forward.
When you look at the rollover number, just, you know, roll forward everything assuming that things stay the same. It's about a 1.5% increase. That's why I just wanted to take a minute and say the other hot-button topic that we hear about is the enrollment, the declining enrollment.
That was going to be my second question.
We have seen a significant decline in our enrollment. We analyze that each year. And last year, when I came and presented an overview of the budget early, one of the things we talked about is the need to really be out front, look at our class size guidelines, and start our planning process by taking reductions in staff that don't impact program. And I call those responsible reductions, or how do we right-size our organization as we continue to get smaller. So the way that in our initial planning, it looks like class sizes will fall, we will be able to reduce quite a few positions. I don't have an exact number now, Mary.
And I didn't mean to ask specifically.
That will help to, to really offset that number. And then certainly we have some, you know, projected, we don't know exactly what they are, but insurance savings from the new negotiations as well. So we hope to be able to offset quite a bit of that in retirements.
I appreciate that, because I, I think that there, there certainly is a lot of concern about the Mill rate and about the Hartford, and certainly in planning for growth, you know, the town can only control what we control, and that's a quarter of the budget. So, you know, I think if, if these contracts were to result in big increases that you didn't see being offset in other areas, I think maybe this would be a longer conversation tonight. Certainly for me, it would, because I wouldn't want to vote tonight for something that's going to lock me in and lock the voters in to something that I think we're going to have a conversation in the spring that may be a difficult one. So I appreciate that, that this is, my vote tonight is.
And enrollment piece continues to be, will be a huge part of our planning over the next several years. You know, last year, we worked with our facilities and enrollment task force, and we came up with a, you know, a three-year plan to start to eliminate the modular space that's attached to our elementary buildings. But I think that's a piece of the puzzle. That's certainly not the long-term solution. I think that we need to put all those options on the table that may include reconfiguration, may include redistrict, may include potential closing of a building at some point. We're not to that point yet, but I think that that group that we work with collaboratively continues to be extremely important to help us mitigate any increases in the future.
I appreciate that. I, that, that helps me because, again, you know, the Board of Selectmen budget has really remained, as you know, very low, zero since 2008, and still, that's only a small piece. If we were to eliminate the entire town budget tomorrow, it still wouldn't really make an overall impact on, on the entire town budget because it was such a small piece. So this is a very significant piece of the town's budget. I think you did a good job controlling the costs, and I appreciate that, and congratulations to you. But I think there's still a warning of future conversations that, you know, there's a lot of difficulty in looking at any increases in budgets, and the fact that you're already having those conversations is very helpful.
Thank you. Other questions?
Sean. I don't mean to imply anything by this, but I got to ask, how do municipalities fare when they reject the contract and they go to arbitration? What typical cases?
You know, the, the record of it is about 50-50. And something to keep in mind on arbitration is that under the state guidelines, it's last best offer. So, and, and the arbitrator, in other words, the arbitrator can't split the baby, they can't sort of find a compromise. They take the last offer from each party, and they deem which one is the most reasonable. So, you know, the unfortunate, or fortunate as the case may be, we are a town that has high average household income. We're not likely to be a sympathetic party in an arbitration process, especially if the other side has proposed a relatively reasonable, quote, whatever that is, contract. So if we were to come in with a, and I've been asked this question, well, why don't we just pay them less? Well, we're going to lose in any arbitration process if we tried to make the case that paying teachers less, reducing their salary, was reasonable. We'll lose that one.
And we might lose the concessions on the healthcare side. We could lose the, the locking in of the new employees on, on the HSA, so yeah.
Right. There's an enormous amount of risk in going to arbitration if you've got, otherwise gotten to a reasonable settlement.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, follow up on your question. So the handout you have where it says operational budget impact, 14-15 of this, 1.5, that's just wage, and as you said, that doesn't take into account the savings that come through the healthcare.
Correct. There's no assumed savings. They are offsets for, for future staffing changes. Every year, we start the collective bargaining process, and we freeze the number of staff in, in time, and that's what the assumptions are based for going forward, but we know that isn't reality.
Okay.
It's just the consistent way it's always been.
Thanks. Other questions? Comments? Is there a motion to reject? Seeing none, thank you very much for presenting tonight and for all your hard work. We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Next item is to accept the resignation of Warren Poe as a regular member of the Water Pollution Control Authority of our plans.
Can I move that?
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is to approve the Democrat Republican nominations to various sports and commissions until January.
January of our, our next.
Of 2014.
Okay. So no specific date to that, or just our first meeting?
As soon as we can get it back before here, and the parties are ready. Town clerk needs to prepare a list of who's expiring, so it just takes a little time. I, I mean, the Board would like to lock in a specific date, but, you know, January, we have two meetings, so.
Sounds good.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is to appoint the, reappoint the technology task force. We had some folks that indicated they can no longer serve, and so they've been removed. Everyone else is just the same people.
Are all the temporary boards engaged? I, I don't know how this works yet, but, so do all the temporary boards get re-upped at the same time?
Until January.
Just until January?
Right. This one isn't, this one.
This one was appointed by the Board of Selectmen, not three of the party chairs. So.
Yeah, this was not a party, this was a, put an ad in the paper, get the best people.
Okay. So it has to be approved separately than from the other ones?
Yes, well, because it doesn't go through the political parties. It's, it's just.
Okay. I was just wondering why it was separate from the other list of.
Yep.
This is similar to how we're doing the potential, the economic development task force.
Yes, exactly. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that.
I figured you'd want to do that. I'll second that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes in November 25?
Move those.
Second those.
Any corrections, changes?
I guess I should abstain, because I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Although we know from Mr. Cook that you do not.
Well, although we just learned that, so.
Yes, COYA does not require that you do that.
We have, we have enough to vote on.
We do.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
I'll abstain.
Two. Thank you. Next meeting, minutes are December 2, special meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second that.
Any corrections, changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Personnel, any report?
Yes, we had a personnel subcommittee meeting earlier this evening. We reviewed the status of personnel issues, including recruitment for open positions and the status of collective bargaining agreements to get our committee members up to date. We did take an action on the RFP responses for delegation of human resources function, actually personnel function. And we asked unanimously that Mr. Cook arranged for an interview with Lee Erdman. He is the lowest bidder, but we wanted to confirm the selection of that before we went ahead and selected.
Excellent.
So that, and then if we decide after that, we want to interview others, we will do that.
Excellent. Thank you. So no action needed tonight?
No action needed tonight.
Public safety, any report?
I do not, but I have a few other reports if you want to remember. I wanted to let folks know that tomorrow at the Simsbury Chamber Commerce Office, Kevin Witko's, our state senator, and John Hampton will be reviewing with businesses Governor Malloy's Executive Order 37 and inviting the public to help identify and address problematic state regulations. They're looking at how to streamline regulations that are there, and they're looking for public input. So if there are any businesses out there that feel that regulations they've experienced are onerous or burdensome, now is the time to speak up, and please contact your state representatives, because they're actually looking at this issue right now. I wanted to thank the library and the schools who put together an intergenerational program, where they brought together student chefs and faculty to teach, now I am one of them, some of the older generation, how to make cookies. And it was wonderful, but the thing, it was wonderful, because they brought together, it was open to the public. It's a way of the schools opening their doors to the public and saying, it's not just about the kids, we are here for the community. And it brought in people of many generations together. It's a really fun evening. And then I want to thank the folks at the Flower Bridge who did the tree lighting the other day, knowing you were there with me. And that was just beautiful.
Yeah, thank you. Any other reports? We are going to adjourn to executive session, so can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Move that.
Just for the record, that's under Section 6E.
It is.
Of COYA.
And we will be meeting with town council, who will be discussing the legal status of taxpayers. I believe Mr. Payne moved it, and Mr. Askam seconded it. All in favor of executive session, say aye.
Aye.[1751.15]